Welcome, everyone. Call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take your role call, please?
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Heether.
Here.
Mr. Tietzort.
Here.
And next, I'll read the mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And before we adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to extend.
They'd like to make a motion to extend the community comments part so that each person, we usually do 15 minutes, but I'd like to extend it so everyone can have their three minutes to speak. To need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, sure.
Mrs. Talby.
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Heether.
Aye.
Mr. Gilbert.
Aye.
Mr. Tietzort.
Aye.
And then, we need a motion in a second to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
And it passes five to zero.
So tonight, we start with a special presentation. We have Chris Trentman from Butler Tech. He's our site supervisor to introduce our BPA team to talk about presentations that they've done and awards they've won.
Yep. So, good evening. Thank you. Yes, I'd like to introduce Noah Denson and Hannah Childs. They are Northwest High School students, both in our Honors Financial Service Program and also BPA students, and they'd love to tell you about their experiences that they've had over the past couple of years.
Hello, board. Once, just to say, I wanted to thank you guys for allowing us the opportunity to speak and be here today. To reiterate, I am Noah Denson. I am a student at, with Butler Tech Financial Services and a member of BPA. I am the state president, and I'm also a co-op at COPFCU.
And hi, I am Hannah Childs, and I am part of the Butler Tech Financial Services Program. I am a state historian with Business Professionals of America, a local chapter president with BPA, which is, stands for Business Professionals of America, and a manager at the Knights Credit Union at Northwest High School.
So, starting off, we definitely want to get into about financial services as a program, or what we like to call FS. So, the main goals of financial services is to prepare the students for future college and career endeavors in business and finance. So that is what we, as a goal, as a class, achieve.
At financial services, we do a lot of things that help students really be immersed in the business world. Soon, we are going to the Blue Jackets. We're taking a field trip there, and we're going to be talking to the sports administration and management to really talk about the business world when it comes to sports and how they market that and everything. And we've also done a few other business activities in the financial service program, such as creating a business plan. We had to come up with our own business and create a business planet, plan for it that would help, you know, make our goals for our business in the future and stuff like that. This really helps us gain the experience and knowledge in the business world.
And then, moving on to one of the things that connects financial services with other things, with BPA, Business Professionals of America. So, in a whole, Business Professionals of America strives to promote and foster professionalism among high school students through competitions and events, through things such as PowerPoint, presentations, slides, and things of that nature. Many students have come through and done BPA. Many students, because of BPA, have lead on to gain successful careers and lives. In financial services alone, we have students all across the world doing, leading some of the most advanced careers in finance and business. We even have BPA within our middle schools, as some of you may know. Me personally, I was in the middle school program for BPA, and I really enjoyed that experience. Because that experience, because of that experience, I was able to not only find something I'm passionate for and love doing, but it just better helped me to be more passionate and ready and more wanting to be at school. And, um, yeah.
At our school, we have, at Northwest and Corrine, we have something called the credit union, the Cardinal Credit Union, which is located at Corrine High School, and the Knights Credit Union, which is located at Northwest High School. Me and Noah are currently at the Knights Credit Union at Northwest High School. We are managers there. And basically, both of the credit unions at Corrine and Northwest have kiosses where staff, teachers, and students can go up and make transactions, whether that's a deposit or withdrawal, and the tellers can assist with these transactions. And me and Noah, as managers, kind of oversee, oversee everything and assist and lead the tellers to success as they make these transactions. We also have another opportunity, something Noah does, is the co-op.
So, just to iterate more on that, so for the co-op position, I actually work at Cincinnati Ohio Federal Police Credit Union, at COPFCU, and I go there after school every day. I've learned through that to do transactions, withdrawals, deposits, and even more about the banking system. So, that has definitely been a major help in my career, not only in high school, but hopefully in the future.
Something that also the Knights Credit Union offers is something called the Game of Life. The Game of Life is an event that's hosted every year at Northwest High School, and basically, kids are there to play a game, like a simulation-type game, when they have to make financial decisions that they would most likely make in real life. We are aware that some of the board members have volunteered there before, so we want to thank you for your volunteer work.
And then, with that, we want to do one, one final shout-out to, one, you guys, the board, and also to Butler Tech for funding and supporting all that, all that we do within finance, within financial services and throughout it. So, thank you guys so much for this time today. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, stay up here for a few questions. No, thank you, guys. I think it's awesome, the real life and work experience that you guys are getting is so valuable compared to just sitting in a classroom and, and hearing so, and just the work ethic and that that you guys put forward. What's, have you guys traveled at all for BPA, or are you planning to soon?
We have traveled a lot in BPA. So, in BPA, as you advance through the competitions, you get to go to places like, well, last year was California. If you're able to make it to the national level, you're able to go to California, and it was an amazing experience. You made a lot of connections there and meet a lot of new people who are, have interest in the business world or are currently in the business world. So, we go on a lot of trips like that. It's an amazing opportunity.
Yeah, and then, just to better emphasize on California, so we went because we are, again, the state officers of Ohio BPA. So, we went and really, we got to experience the whole background behind everything that's done. Like, we had to host voting sessions for our national team, so it was definitely a very enlightening experience.
Very cool. Well, congratulations.
Do you guys plan on going to college, or just getting jobs right out of high school?
Yes.
We both plan on going to college.
And what would you major in in college?
Mostly, probably business and marketing, one of the two.
For me, it's business management and/or marketing.
Excellent.
Great job presenting.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Next, we have our student achievement liaison report.
All right. Thank you. So, I'm going to be tested on a few of the names this evening, so please forgive me. I'm going to do my best to try and get them correct. Start off with Pleasant Run Middle School. Congratulations to the Pleasant Run Middle School 7th Grade Volleyball Team, the Southwest Conference Tournament runner-up. Also, congratulations to the Pleasant Run Middle School 7th Grade Football Team. Pleasant Run finished atop the 2023 SWAC 7th Grade Football Standings. The 2023 SWAC 7th Grade Football Final standings show the Pleasant Run Knights on top with a record of 2-0 in SWAC play. The Knights finished the season with an overall record of 5-1. Congratulations, Pleasant Run Knights. Pleasant Run Middle School Students of the Month. All students were awarded a Knights Pride, pride representing positivity, respect, integrity, dependability, and excellence. Certificates and a Knights shirt to wear on our Knights' days. Morgan Chapman. Morgan demonstrates Knight pride daily by actively participating in class, encouraging her classmates to follow expectations and striving for excellence on a daily basis. Cameron Hall. Cameron is a very respectful, kind, never a distraction, and very active in the classroom. Team Victory appreciates all the hard work. Keep it up. Sydney Guttnack. Sydney is a very nice to everyone and is a very hard worker. She is great to have in class and always participates and great to all her teachers. Team Victory appreciates all, appreciates all her hard work. Charlotte Emerson. Charlotte is a wonderful student that is eager to learn, happy to be at school, helpful to her teachers, and polite to her peers. We are so proud to have Charlotte on Team Journey. Francisco Ramirez Garcia. Francisco strives to do well in all of his classes. He is polite, helpful, and always does the right thing. We are happy to have Francisco on Team Journey. Yali Sweler Monzen. Yali has been extremely helpful with our new Spanish-speaking students. She has made them feel welcome and has made sure to include them with all school activities. She is kind and polite, and I am so proud of her progress learning English. Keep up the great work. Mrs. Wilson. Teya Bustmonte. Teya takes great pride in all of her work. She completes everything at a high level, which has led to her having straight A's on Team Succeed. She is always respectful to those in her class and her teachers. Teya is the example of Knight pride. Jordan Green. Jordan is a great role model for his peers, as he is a responsible student and is always willing to lend a helping hand. Yaspin Hagga. Team Ambition is proud of Yaspin's hard work, consistent effort, and respect of peers and adults all the time. She is a wonderful asset to our classrooms. Amaje Rosehill. Amaje always has a smile on his face and a great attitude. His good personality allows him to approach difficult tasks and be a good example to his peers. Jeriah Twymon. Jeriah is a kind person and great student. She is always encouraging to her classmates and helping keep the class on task. Colton Lawson. This student embodies what it means to get the job done. Colton is reliably responsible, taking pride in completion of his work to the utmost of his ability, and is always positive about asking for assistance or clarification. For this excellence of character, Team Legend presents this award. Ryland Monroe. This student is a glowing example of excellence in one's work, responsibility for one's behavior, and ultimate integrity of character. Ryland is not only the embodiment of academic Knight pride, she represents care and positivity towards her friends and classmates as well. Gabriela Coronado Perez. Gabriela is an outstanding student. She is constantly working hard to do well in class. She is also an excellent role model for her peers. Naomi Demiduk. Naomi always has a positive attitude, is responsible in getting her work completed, and is an excellent role model for others. Josh Godbold. Josh is a responsible and polite young man, who is dependable and always prepared for class and a good role model for others. Aubrey Bennington. Aubrey is always willing to help others, to take responsibility for her actions and clean the room without being asked. Jordan Samuelson. Jordan is determined to complete her work to better herself. Jordan is truly, naturally artistic, and always willing to go the extra mile for her work in helping others. Martina Marvin. Martina has made so much progress in the past year. Martina is willing to work to help others and is always on her best behavior. Congratulations to all those students from Pleasant Run Middle School. All right, on to Corrine High School. Corrine Boys Golf Team finished fourth at the sectional at Miami Whitewater behind St. X Elder and Tallawanda. Alex Diesel, 75. Jackson Lambrenidis, 79. Reed Schaefer, 81. And Jack Berger, 85, for a team score of 320. Also at Corrine, Haley Johnson, first singles player for Corrine's women tennis, broke the season wins record at the sectional tournament with three victories over Fairfield Northwest and Lakota West. Haley reached 18 wins for the season, beating the 15-win record since 2003. At Northwest High School Spotlight Students of the Month. Kevin Bolanos Gonzalez, Mitzi Prisano Lopez, Fabiola de la Cruz Alvarez have helped the counseling office immensely by providing ESL orientation, coordinating campus, and providing translation services when new students and their families have come in. Congratulations to the Northwest High School Football Team on their first win of the season during homecoming week. Our Northwest High School band, students did an awesome job in their post-game performance. Thank you.
Congratulations to all those students. Jim?
Yeah, for Butler, just one other thing for Butler Tech. And I want to thank Chris for bringing the BPA kids up here, and they, they do a fabulous job. And it's, it's a big deal when they're a state representative, you know, the president and the historian, I believe. Yeah, that's, that is a big thing, and I think they, they deserve another round of applause for that. One other thing, just, Butler Tech, we hosted the Ohio Department of Public Safety. They had, the director, Wilson, he came in and he addressed the seniors in the firefighting technology program, and they did a live burn scenario there for all their parents to see and all the people that were there. And representative, one of the representatives was there, and Senator George Lang was there also, and it was a great program for our kids. And I think we have a, a senior at Corrine High School is in that class, so they, they did a very good job for that.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything, Chris? I'm not just saying about Dave?
Nicole, one thing. It's my favorite topic.
You do it well.
This is from overseas, but hopefully, this will be Ohio law or even at a higher level. Mobile cellphone use has been banned now in England. The Education Secretary Gillian Keegan announced today, this has been a week or two ago, the move will bring England in line with other countries that have already implemented a ban, including France, Italy, and Portugal. It follows warnings from the United Nations on the risks of smartphones in schools, and the United Nations is hardly a conservative group. And data found that about 29% of secondary school pupils reported cellphone use when they were not supposed to in most or all of their lessons. That's what they call them over there, their lessons. So, it's gaining traction. They're not good. I talk to teachers, you know, no matter what the consensus is, what people say in surveys and that, when you talk to them privately, they will tell you that cellphones. I have a friend who retired from one of our schools after 35 years, and she said, as soon as everybody got the cellphone, that's when the major declines in discipline and learning started. And she said they were the worst thing that could have happened, but I won't leave home without it, so. So, anyway, that's it.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
You have a lot of students out there that are going to disagree. Disagree with you out there.
Any report from employee organizations?
None tonight.
All right, next up is community comments. So, I just want to remind everyone that we have extended the time to allow each person three minutes to speak. The individuals will be called up and will preface their comments by announcing their name, address, and if they have a group affiliation. Each person will be given three minutes to speak. No response to the speaker will occur from board members, district administrators, or members of the public in attendance at this time, according to the, the law. The presiding officer has a right to terminate the participation of any individual if the person violates the rules of good order. So, we're just going to go in order here. First is Cheryl Cooper.
Hello.
Hi. I am Cheryl Cooper. My address is 3363 Palm Hill Lane. And I have, oh, it starts with my address. No, I guess, affiliation. Okay. Hello, everyone. I am Cheryl Cooper. I was the coach of a previously known CHS dance team. I am here today to discuss this discrimination and unfair treatment that we face within the club in this district. I use my nonprofit to sponsor the dance team because for two years, no one in the district was willing to sponsor or touch this team, according to those in leadership, or even point the students and parents in the right direction. The superintendent claims you have to open the coaching position within the district halfway through the first year, but where was the district's support the last two years? Changing the classification didn't come until I pointed out the blatant discrimination towards the targeted group in retaliation when it was addressed. From the beginning and throughout, these kids have been given a different set of rules and expectations from any other team in the school. At this point, I am honestly not sure if the administration, student services, and superintendent lied to cover up that there was a drill and dance team to mistreat the dancers, or if they were truly blind to the fact that there had been a drill and dance team sponsored by the district since 1956 and performed until 2012. The fact that this team is still sponsored in the minutes released by the board this past summer seems to stand out to me. It seems like the dancers are being used to cover this up. Either way, it seems to be an issue. I have submitted an invoice for my time as the coach due to the verbal and written agreement being breached. The money and time I put in on the team was with the understanding for the term mentioned in our agreements. It was the school district's job to do its due diligence prior to making these agreements. The administration could have handled this properly by sitting myself and the team down and coming up with an agreement for next year. Instead, they chose to put the students aside and make a hastily decision based on their own hidden agendas with disregard to how the students would suffer from this. We have requested documentation and paperwork since February that was never provided. Corrine High School and the Northwest Local School District has not supported this team in any way, but now that they are good enough to them and connected to the community, they want to take over. When they were feeding 100 homeless individuals, giving back, and free dances, they were never mentioned. When they bridged the gap between other schools, only those schools acknowledged them. In fact, Corrine and the Northwest Local School District has yet to welcome them or mention them at all. For a school that has 50% minority enrolled and in the bottom 50% in the state testing, reading, and math, you would think they would be doing all they can to keep the parents and kids engaged and active. Last year, the cheerleaders wanted to do a stump cheer, and were advised by A.D. Matt Stoinoff that if they wanted to do that ghetto cheer, they could transfer to Wynton Woods. He could even prepare their transfer papers. This year, he stated about dance, that if he was a 65-year-old man in the district who had been here his whole life, would he get upset and be offended? That question could mean multiple things, but after seeing how these kids were treated by Corrine and Northwest Local School District, we now know exactly what he meant and the negative mindset of some of those in this community, including leaders. It is 2023, and time to grow and evolve or step aside.
Thank you. Next is Renee Thretz, Thretz, sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. The reason I'm here is because my daughter's on the dance team with a numerous amount of young ladies, and they enjoy doing what they're doing, and they keep giving them a chase around of different venues that they have to do and stuff that they have to complete, and when they do this, then they keep doing things back up in their face. Ms. Cheryl, she's a great coach. She makes sure these girls is on right path. I mean, they got good grades and so forth. They became to be a sisterhood, and that's what we want. And they want to know, why can't they start where they started from and finish, instead of having someone else come in to try to create something that's already been created? She spent her heart, earned money, and her time, not asking for no one else's money, to get these girls on the right path. And by far, you see these Corrine students, the mothers, they're ready. We ready. We just want answers, and we want these girls to progress and succeed, and you guys are giving them false hope. So, what, we just want a fair trial, everyone, you know, to be treated equally. So, with this being said, we hope tonight, we can get on the right path and the right page, so we can get these girls out and rolling and bring up Corrine's name even more. So, with that being said, good evening. Have a nice night, and God bless.
Thank you. All right. And then, I'm going to call the next three girls together, but you will each have three minutes if you choose. Skye McDaniel, Bree Black, and Alon? And Aness? You're welcome, someone was nervous, so you're welcome to all stand together if you choose, or you can go one at a time, however you choose. Just if you'll say your name, who's speaking first?
I am Brianna, one of the CHS dance members. We feel like it's unfair how we can't finish out this year together. How we started off, we have been trying to have a dance team since my freshman year, and every time we brought it up, we got turned down because we didn't have anyone to run a dance team. And now that we have coaches who are willing to volunteer and do the dance team for us, they are getting terminated. We don't think that's fair. They're doing this on their own time. They can be, they can be at their jobs, but instead, they are trying to help us make high school memories. They aren't getting paid for this, but now, y'all are making it a paid position when the coaches was never getting paid.
Thank you, Bree.
Thank you, Brianna.
Hi, I'm Skye McDaniel. I'm part of the Corrine High School Dance Team. I just think it's unfair, and it's just like, kind of a weird situation, how all of a sudden, my coach brought up the situation, or how she wasn't getting paid, and you guys were like paying someone else for the position. And she just pointed out what was unfair, and then all of a sudden, after she said that, the school just decided to terminate her and replace her with someone else, with someone we don't even know, and someone that can't teach us like she does. She knows all the dances. She knows everything, but instead, y'all just want to throw in another teacher that doesn't know anything about it, because the school said that they want our coach to teach the new coach the dances, but why don't y'all just keep the same coach?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anise Threes, a member of the Corrine High School Dance Team, and I just found it unfair on how they wanted us to have the dance team, and they took their time out, and their kids not even on the dance team. They, they wasn't getting paid for it or nothing. They took their time out. They believed, they believed in us when none of y'all believed in us. And I just feel like that this is a positive outlet for us, and it keeps us busy, keeps us out of trouble, and they coming from, from our background, so they know if we was to go through something, and they know, like, our culture and stuff.
Thank you.
Hey, I am Island, and I am also a member from the Corrine Dance Team, and I love my dance team and the bond that I created with them. It's a positive outlet for us to keep us busy outside of school. Hold on. Our coaches have been positive role models for us with outreach in our community and giving back to others. We need them to stay, because it wouldn't feel right if it was no one but them.
Thank you. Thank you, girls.
Good job, ladies.
All right. And Ryan Glace?
Hey, everybody.
Hey, Ryan.
Two and a half months. Here I am again. Here we go. Three minutes that I get to sit up here and tell you guys problems that I'm having, and then never hear from anybody again for another two weeks, which is kind of ridiculous. I think maybe some type of protocol of, hey, why don't we at least call the people after they talk and say, here's where we're at on the matter? Might feel like you guys actually gave any kind of care about what people are coming up here and talking about, okay? So, that's where we're starting out. Now, I found it extremely ironic. I've been trying to get my kids on a school bus. Can't get them on a school bus, because I live within a mile. Don't let the school bus stop within a mile of the freaking school then. The bus stop isn't a mile away. It's nine tenths of a mile. Kids get off the bus, I sat there and watched them three different days to make sure I wasn't coming in here and giving you guys wrong information. My house is on top of the street, too close. Bus stop's on the bottom of the street. Yep, kids are getting off the bus and walking halfway down the street to go to their house. The rest of the kids, I think there were maybe two of them, that I could see their house from where the bus stop is. Everybody else loading up and cars going, get it done. It's getting to the point of absolutely ridiculous. I'm tired of wasting my time coming in here for absolutely zero results. Now, went a little bit step further on that one this time. See all these signs up, Levy, 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 we all want Levis. See all these signs up, levy, 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 we all want levies. Maybe we trimmed the fat in this room, because there were two men that I was told from the get-go that we're gonna take care of this situation, Mr. Yater and Mr. McKee. Well, according to government salaries dot com, we're over a quarter million dollars on you two guys. We can't get two kids on a freaking bus, and it's a matter of safety. I'm tired of this crap. On that note, they went ahead and gave percentages on there. Now, I'm giving you what, again, government salaries dot com. I encourage everyone to look at it themselves. I'm not gonna give the numbers, but I will give the numbers of three-hundred-and-forty-four percent higher than the average of people doing this same exact job, four-hundred-and-nineteen percent more than what the average salary is within this district. That is so messed up on so many freaking levels. You know, when I run my business, I have my employees come in, we're gonna talk about a raise. The first thing that I ask them, are you worth it? What have you brought to this company? How have you improved things? How are you an asset to my team? Got a parent coming in for two and a half months begging for help so that their kids can get to school safely, and what has been accomplished? Nothing. But I will give you this, the one good thing that did come from all this. When we had the Friday off of school the other day, I dropping my elementary school daughter off at school, right? In this safe space that we've created, and all sorts of crap. And what do I get? I get a teacher skipping down the middle of the freaking aisle where I'm dropping my daughter off, as she's singing a song that they're blaring. This is a great song for elementary school kids. Won't stop till I get them in their birthday suit. Give me the rhythm, and it'll be off with their clothes, then have them bend over front and touch their toes. That's what my ten-year-old daughter showed up to school to hear. And I'm looking around this room, and I'm going, again, what, what are we spending this freaking money on? What are we doing? And I'm not, I, again, I'm gonna go and say, there have been certain members that I do believe have been helpful, but on a whole, what the hell are we doing here? We, we need board members that are gonna hold these people accountable. We're gonna give them these absorbent salaries, fine, but they need to do their job. And right now, that's what needs to happen.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right, moving into the consent items, we'll start with H.R.
We seek your approval for the following: three resignations, three initial appointments, two change in status, and various supplemental items.
We have two donations, one from Clifford YMCA to the Montford Heights Elementary School for volleyball system. We also have another one from Corinne Boosters to the Corinne High School Athletics for door wraps. We have several contracts for Best Point Behavioral Health and a revision to the Hamilton County E.S.C. contract. We also have one athletics contract for subscriptions, recording, and strength.
With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the consent items as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? What's the timing for the volleyball system up at Montford Heights? That's exciting. Yeah, good. Well, thank everyone for their donations and support of our schools. That passes five to zero.
Good evening. First, I'd like to dispense with reading of and approve the October ninth regular board meeting minutes, and we have our September financial report. Our all funds balance is ninety-three million, and our general fund unreserved balance is fifty-one million. We are a quarter away or twenty-five percent through the year. Our revenues are thirty-nine million, or about thirty-nine percent, and our expenditures are twenty-three million, or twenty-two percent. Our investment weighted average return is four-point-one-eight percent. And our list of bills for the month of September, we have our routine monthly bills, as well as some professional development, bus cameras, our Medicaid billing fees, annual inspections, maintenance and bus repairs, insurance, football helmet, textbooks, student and staff software, as well as some auxiliary and grant fund expenditures. With that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
You need a motion? Second? Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Given approval of another item. This actually requires approval. This is a memorandum of agreement that is between the district and the Corinne High School Boosters. This would allow the boosters to hold their century gala on Corinne High School property on March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. So this agreement does lay out the legal agreements between us that would also allow them, for this event, to serve alcohol, so they have certain requirements that they have to follow in order to have the insurance and liability to do that. But this does allow them for that one limited event to do that on our property so that they could do that as a fundraiser for their gala. So with that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the memorandum as listed between the district and the boosters to allow the event. So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Nicole, just wanted to comment. I've been sort of involved with this. This is in lieu of a stag this year. There won't be a stag, and it's basically to celebrate the hundredth anniversary of Corinne High School. It's gonna be some, I mean, it's supposed to be a really, really nice evening. I think they're allowing seating for four-hundred people, and they were gonna have a guest speaker. Some of them wanted too much money. Some of them wanted local celebrities, wanted like twelve thousand dollars, which is a lot of money for a high school booster club to pay. So I'm not sure what they're gonna do in lieu of the celebrities, but it'll be a fun night for everybody, and looking forward to it.
Thank you. This passes five to zero.
The other item on there does not require a vote, but it is for information for the board and the community. In June, when the new budget bill passed, the legislators removed the old lizard bag provision of the law that allowed districts to use remote learning for closures on calamity days, snow days, things like that. So they replaced it with this calamity day plan. This is the plan that we have worked with the teachers' union on and come to agreement around what that would look like. This allows us, in a situation, to use remote learning for a calamity day. As a district, we would only do that if we got into a position where we were using so many of our calamity days that it would be forcing us to keep school in session into June. So this is a last, like, having in our back pocket for the worst-case scenario. So this is just information that we have this if we need it. It has been signed off on by the district and the union, so we have that if we need it. We're hoping not to. If there are snow days up until the point where it would require us to go into June, they will be snow days.
Thank you.
And then just to share a couple of things, we are continuing to do the schoolhouse talks. We have one scheduled this week at TAGS on Thursday, so encouraging people to come out and have those conversations. They're not necessarily agenda-driven, so encouraging people to continue to engage with the district, ask questions, and be informed. And then to keep their eyes out, we did have a teacher this week who is being celebrated as the local twelve teacher of the week. It hasn't, as far as I know, hit the air yet, but we do want to keep people aware. We will push out notifications district-wide when it is public knowledge, but we are excited and thrilled that another one of our teachers is getting recognized for the hard work they do.
What, what time is that on Thursday at TAGS?
Eight AM.
Eight AM?
Yes. That's it for tonight.
Seems like we've had quite a few of our teachers recognized by those, so that's great.
That's great.
All right, board member comments?
Nicole, yeah, I have one thing. I know our gentleman speaker certainly has a lot of passion, and I, I had a friend who was right on the mile border back when I was in school, and back then, we used to provide transportation for high school, and that was a long time ago. But there's one thing that I just want corrected for the record. Quickly during the discussion here on different things, I did look up what the average salary for a superintendent was in Ohio, and you had said, I think, like four-hundred percent above the average.
Four-hundred-and-nineteen percent above what the median income is in the district. So they're taking into account the teachers, everybody out on the front lines that were...
Well, I looked up what the average salary was for superintendent. Our superintendent is below the average.
So just, just to make sure I'm getting our information, because I certainly don't want to throw somebody out there if it's not the correct information.
But I just don't want the public thinking we're paying four-hundred...
Well, it's gov salaries dot com.
Well...
That's, that's where, I mean, like I say, it's not, unless this website's putting up false information.
Jim?
I got it right here.
Comments?
Yeah.
You can look everybody up by their name, everybody within the district.
Well, just from my angle, Nicole, if you'll let me finish, you know, I just don't think, because this is on cable, that the public should be thinking that we're paying people four-hundred percent more than what other people of similar capacities are being paid in other districts, and I'll finish with that.
No, that number was only three-hundred-and-forty-four percent. It wasn't four-hundred.
Well, three-forty-four, it's whatever. Okay, thank you, Nicole.
Just one thing, I just want to thank Chris for bringing the Butler Tech students and the BPA students in the finance department. They did a great job, and I wanted to thank the girls that got up and spoke from the dance team. You guys did a very good job, and thanks for your passion.
Mark?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to, you know, ditto what Jim just said. Thank you to the BPA students that came and spoke this evening, and thank you to Cheryl, the coach, and Renee, the team mom, one of the dance moms, and also the dance team members for speaking this evening. Appreciate you coming out. And thank you, Mr. Glaze, for coming and speaking again. I wish there was an easy solution for your situation.
All right. Mark?
Oh, good luck to the Corinne High School and Northwest High School marching bands. They're performing this Saturday, both at the West Claremont Invitational. So looking forward to seeing them perform on Saturday. As a bonus, the University of Cincinnati Marching Band is the exhibition at the Invitational on Saturday. I know we have at least one alumni member from our district performing with U.C., so looking forward to Saturday.
That's great.
First, I want to say, Noah and Hannah Duke, great job. I believe you work with my daughter at the credit union, Hannah, and that experience, when my wife and I have any banking questions, we ask my daughter, and it's amazing what they learn there, so congratulations on that. Renee, Brianna, Skylar, Isla?
Isla.
Isla? I'm sorry. I know it's very nervous getting up and talking in front of people, and so thank you for your courage in coming up and sharing with the board your position and what's important for you. And thanks for the parents for coming, Ryan, Fred. I hope we find some kind of solution for you, I really do. That's it.
All right, thank you. I would like to recognize our district, the schools that won the Clean Kitchen Award. I know we just shared that on Facebook. There's some, a lot of our schools have been listed in the past several months with Clean Kitchen, so I think that's great. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Israel over at Struble. She's our district nominee for the RISE Award, and she, I see her over there all the time working with the kids outside the classroom, and she's just, she's awesome, and she's always very helpful, and I think that's a great nominee for our district. Also, this is the last meeting that we'll have before the election, so I'd like to encourage everyone to get out and vote, and just thank our police for everything they do to keep our students safe and our schools safe. They do have a levy on the ballot this time, so I would encourage everyone to get out and support them. And I'd also like to thank our students and parents and coaches that spoke today. I applaud you for standing up and speaking for what you believe, and just thank you guys for coming out.
Next, we will consider a motion to move into executive session. The board will consider details related to security arrangements and emergency response protocols because disclosure of the matters discussed could reasonably be expected to jeopardize security of the Board of Education, to consider employment and discipline of a public employee, and matters required be kept confidential by federal or state statutes, as well as to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending or imminent court action. With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the motion to move into executive session as listed. So moved.
Second.
It's not letting me. It's not letting it move to vote. No, it's not letting me. It says call to vote, but it's not letting me move to vote. Let me try to move to vote. No.
It's not showing who's in there a second. Yeah, there it goes.
Let me try. Try again. Who was that? Chris? Does it seem, does it look like it's? It's not letting me, at the top, it doesn't say vote. Did you vote? It's just me that can't vote.
Yeah, it's just showing you the only one standing.
Yeah, it's not giving me the vote screen.
Mrs. Toby?
Yes.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Mr. Desil?
Aye.
Mr. Heather?
Aye.
Mr. Tietzort?
Aye.
All right, so just a reminder that we will, oh, I can vote now. All right, that we will go to executive session when we return. No further business will be handled except for during the meeting, so thank you.